Of the seven churches in the Book of Revelation that these letters are written to, the one we're going to talk about tonight is my favorite. It's the Church of Smyrna. And several reasons for that. One is, Jesus doesn't have anything negative to say about this church, which is a really good thing. But He has nothing but commendation for this body of believers. But also because there's a little bit more information that we can know historically about what was going on at the time in the Church of Smyrna. And we're going to share a little bit about kind of what happens after the Book of Revelation is written, and particularly the relationship with this particular body of believers. So, last time we were together, we talked about the Church in Ephesus, and that God called them to return, to repent, to remember, and to once again be the people that were passionately in love with Him and with one another. And now, tonight, we want to look at the Church in Smyrna. And so, here are the words of Revelation, Chapter 2, verses 8 through 11. "And to the angel of the church in Smyrna write: The words of the first and the last, who died and came to life; I know your tribulation and your poverty, but you are rich; and the slander of those who say that they are Jews, and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan. Do not fear what you are about to suffer; behold, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested; and for ten days you will have tribulation. Be faithful unto death, and I will give you the crown of life. He who has an ear, lay in ear what the Spirit says to the churches; the one who conquers will not be hurt by the second death." So, one of the things that we see in this letter to the Church of Smyrna is the absolute necessity for us to have a robust, theologically grounded perspective on suffering. One of the problems that we in the United States particularly, but even in other parts of the developed world, we've had it very easy. And honestly, I think some of the issues you read about in the news with this virus are kind of shaking that sense of security that many people have kind of to the core. This idea that, you know, we live in a stable, successful, prosperous world where things just kind of go well. You know, just over time, things are going to get better. We just kind of had this very progressive view in the sense of progress, things getting better, things constantly improving. And as a result, many times, we don't wrestle with the reality of suffering. We talk about suffering as something that's going to happen way off in the future. It's something that we don't have to deal with today, but we should be at least aware that it's going to happen and be prepared. Whereas there are believers around the world where this is a constant, persistent reality for them, this reality of suffering. And so, as we look at the Church in Smyrna, it's a helpful reminder for us to understand a biblical perspective on suffering. And there's so much the Bible says about suffering that we could spend weeks on this issue. One thing the Bible never does though is tell you why. The Bible never explains why we suffer. But it does deal with this issue of suffering. So, what do we see in this letter to the Church in Smyrna? Well, the first observation I want us to make is the reality of persecution. Notice what it says there in verse 9. "I know your tribulation." Jesus is speaking through John to this church. "I know your tribulation." Jesus knows their difficulty. And it seems from what we read here that they are suffering as a result of their faithful witness to Christ, that that's why they're suffering. Now, sometimes people think that all suffering is because of being a Christian. Sometimes suffering happens because we live in a fallen world. Sometimes suffering happens because of mistakes that we make. But there are occasions where suffering occurs because of a faithful witness to Christ. Perhaps, one of the reasons why we've had it so easy here in the United States for the last 150, 200 years is because our witness has not been as faithful as it should be. Perhaps, one of the reasons why things seem to be increasingly difficult is because the contrast between the Church and the world needs to be more pronounced. And for a long time, maybe it was not as pronounced as it should have been. As a result, we didn't suffer for that faithful witness. But suffering for a faithful witness. Now, understand that suffering is a guarantee for the Christian. This is not something that happens to a select few. Persecution, suffering, tribulation, interchangeable words in this context, is a guarantee for the Christian. How do I know this? Because the Bible tells me so. That's how I know this. Notice what it says there in 2 Timothy 3:12. "Indeed, all..." Last time I checked, "all" is a pretty all-encompassing word, right? "All who desire to live a godly life in Christ Jesus will be persecuted." "All who desire to live a godly life in Christ Jesus will be persecuted." Does it describe what that's going to look like? It's guaranteed it's going to happen, the reality of persecution. Now, what we think, what most New Testament studies think was going on in Smyrna, Smyrna was a prominent city in modern-day Turkey. In fact, there's still a present-day city that's not called Smyrna anymore. But there's still a city that's there. It's one of the few places that's got that ancient history that has continued on to modern day. It's a city that was very proud to be a Roman city. To the extent that they had a temple dedicated to the goddess of Rome. So, they worshiped this idea of Romanness, and they venerated the emperor. And they would say things like Caesar is Lord was a key component of their worship. Well, if you're a Christian, you can't say Caesar is Lord. You can say Christ is Lord. And as a result, that was treasonous behavior. That was unpatriotic behavior. That was actually considered being a bad citizen. And so, they would be persecuted for this stand for Christ. Now, understand this. If you suffer because of your faithful witness to Jesus, that's a really good thing. Don't get discouraged by that. Now, if you suffer because you're obnoxious and mean, and, you know, nobody likes you, that's a character issue. You've got to deal with that. But if you suffer because of a faithful witness for Christ, rejoice in that. Notice what Peter says in 1 Peter 3:20. He poses this question, says, "What credit is it if when you sin or beaten for it, you endure?" So, in other words, if you do wrong and you suffer, that's justice. But if when you do good and suffer for it, you endure, this is a gracious thing in the sight of God. So, if you suffer, and you've not done anything to deserve it besides be faithful to Christ, it's a wonderful thing. The reality of persecution for suffering due to a faithful witness to Christ. Understand this as well. One of the consequences of suffering for many is poverty. That's what it says there in the verse there in verse 9. "I know your tribulation and your poverty." There is poverty as a result of this suffering. This is oftentimes where it becomes very difficult for us in the modern Western world to embrace a biblical theology of suffering. Because we like our stuff. We like our stuff. We like that we have access to stuff. When the Cold War ended in the late 80s, early 90s, there were lots of sociological, historical analyses of why communism collapsed in Europe, and capitalism won, all this kind of stuff. But one of the most compelling arguments that I've ever read is the reason why communism collapsed and capitalism won had nothing to do with the individual people's commitment to the system. Instead, it was the desire of the people in the communist countries to shop and have access to the same material wealth that existed in the capitalistic countries. To the extent that when the Berlin Wall came down, written in part of the Berlin Wall before it was completely torn down, after it had been opened up, someone had written on the side, going into what was East Berlin. "We came, we saw, we did a little shopping." Because in the communist place, the shelves were bare, and the capitalistic place, the shelves were full. And so, there was that, we like our stuff, you know? What do we do when we think a crisis is going to come? We start hoarding stuff. Now, we start hoarding, what? Clorox wipes, toilet paper, which I can't figure out if we're supposed to wrap ourselves up in it as protection. I don't know what the point of that is, but I'm trying to figure that out. But anyway, we like, we find security in stuff. And one of the results of persecution can be poverty. And think about it. What would you do if for the cause of Christ, you lost your house? You lost your car? You lost your money? You lost your savings? You lost everything? What would that do to you? I'm not answering it out loud, I just want you to think about that. This is what's happening in the Church of Smyrna. What most scholars and historians think is going on is that because the Christians in Smyrna were not participating in the civic religion of the worship of the emperor and the generation of Rome and all of that, that what was happening is they could not get a job or conduct business. And so, they were suffering, and they were poor as a result of that. And this is not a unique experience in Christian history. For centuries, this has been a common occurrence for people to have to choose between the goods of the world and the cause of Christ. Paul himself even talked about his own experience in 1 Corinthians 4:11 and 12. Now, if you want to get a, you know, a good outreach program, let this be our motto. "To the present hour, we hunger and thirst." Well, that just, most bad is out right there, right? "We are poorly dressed, and buffeted, and homeless; and we labor, working with our own hands. When reviled, we blessed; when persecuted, we endure." Notice the imagery that Paul's saying is on like, you know, poverty for the cause of Christ. Notice what verse 9 there in Revelation 2 says. "I know your tribulation and your poverty, but you are rich." Now, some want to read that with an economic prosperity approach to it. That's not what John is writing, what Jesus is telling the church here. What he's saying is, understand this. "Your wealth is not in what you own; your wealth is in what owns you." And poverty for the cause of Christ, suffer for the cause of Christ. If that leads to poverty, you don't have to worry because guess what? The one who owns everything owns you. Just think about the freedom of that, the absolute freedoms that could bring. To not have to worry, do I have money in my bank account to pay my bills? Well, you've got nothing, you've got nothing to worry about. And God's going to meet your needs. God's going to take care of you. You may not know how it's going to happen, but God promises you'll have everything you need. That's immensely freeing. So, the reality of persecution, suffering for the cause of Christ, for that faithful witness, but also the poverty that can come as a result of it. Another form of persecution is slander from enemies. Notice what he says there, "In the slander of those who say that they are Jews, and are not, but are a synagogue of Satan." Now, I made a conscious decision in the notes. We'll talk more about this when we get into the rest of the Book of Revelation. But one of the things that we need to understand in biblical terms, and Paul talked about this in Romans, and it's in other places in the Bible, the identity of a Jew is not, true Jews are not Jews by birth. They are Jews by faith. Children of Abraham are not children of Abraham because they are descended biologically from Abraham. Children of Abraham are those who are descended by virtue of faith. So, here's what John's getting at here, and what Jesus is telling to the church. This synagogue that was causing problems to the church, you know, they called themselves Jews. But they weren't really Jews because they're not people of faith. They're not believers in Jesus. So, therefore, he calls them a synagogue of Satan because they've not accepted Christ. So, we'll get more into the details of kind of the relationship of the Christian to the Jew and, you know, the role of Israel when we get to the rest of the Book of Revelation. But just understand that from a biblical viewpoint, there's only one people of God. And the same people have been the people of God by the same virtue of faith from the very beginning. And there's not some kind of secondary class of people that are His by virtue of birth. It's always by faith. It's never been by genealogical descent. Always by faith. So, they're experiencing slander as a result of this. Now, let me answer you this question. Have you ever had somebody say something to you that was, say something about you that was untrue? It doesn't feel good, does it? You don't like it, do you? I don't like it. I don't typically get angry very often. But I have gotten angry a few times in my ministry. And every time I've gotten really angry, it's because of some untruth that has been said. Either about me or about somebody else. And that just angers me when that happens. That's called slander. Slander is when you say something to hurt someone that's not true about them. Now, think about this. Follow the logic here, okay? A world that is lost, that does not know Christ, does not understand us. Scripture says, "If they knew Me," Jesus said, "if they knew Me, they would know you. They don't know Me, so they don't know you. They don't understand us." It's likely they're going to say things about us that are untrue. Good example. About 100 years after the Book of Revelation is written, persecution of Christians. You know what the leading accusation against the Christians? What would leading accusation was against the Christians? Three things. They were atheists, they were cannibals, and they were incestuous. Okay? Now, it's a thing, right? See if you can figure out why they didn't say? One, okay, atheists. Well, they didn't worship, all atheists means is no God. They didn't worship the Roman gods. So, that's where they got that from, that they were atheists, okay? Cannibalistic, when we have the Lord's sufferance, what do we say? "This is My body, which is broken for you. This is My blood." You don't know what we're doing, that sounds like we're eating something that we ought not to be eating. And incestuous. Well, you know, in Christ, what are we? We're brothers and sisters. To the people who don't understand that relationship, that might sound a little odd. So, those kind of false accusations were made against the Christians. And they suffered as a result of that, that kind of slander. Now, here's what Jesus says in the Sermon on Mount Matthew 5. He says, "Blessed are you when others revile you and persecute you, and utter all kinds of evil against you falsely on My account; rejoice and be glad." Don't be like I did, get angry. "Rejoice and be glad." Why? "For your reward is great in heaven; for so they persecuted the prophets who were before you." "Rejoice, be glad." The only ways you can prove that you're a Christian is by persecution, by suffering, by people saying untrue things about you. "Rejoice and be glad if you're suffering on account of Christ." So, we see the reality of persecution. Then, we also see two commands in the face of persecution. Two things that the Church of Smyrna was to do, and that we are supposed to do. First command, "Do not fear coming persecution." Verse 10. "Do not fear what you are about to suffer; behold, the devil is about to throw some of you into prison, that you may be tested; and for ten days you will have tribulation." "Do not fear the coming persecution." Why do we not fear the coming persecution? Well, I think there's really two reasons why we shouldn't fear it. One of them is in verse 10 there. He says, "You may be tested." So, understand that persecution does something, but it says for 10 days. Now, there's a lot of debate and commentaries on what that means. Most argue that it's not literally 10 days. It's just basically saying it's not going to last forever. It's temporary. So, understand it's not going to last indefinitely. It will eventually end. We can then endure a lot if you know it's going to end. This past week, Sophie started playing softball, and we were outside practicing the other day. And she's, you know, she's young, starting out, and she's still afraid of the ball. And so, you know, throw the ball instead of trying to get up behind it, she does this number here, and tries to get her body as far away from the ball as she possibly can. Well, you don't typically catch the ball when you do that. So, I'm trying to teach you, you've got to get behind the ball. Let your body be part of how you stop the ball. And she said, "Well, Daddy, what if the ball hits me?" And my response for it, "It's going to hurt, but it will stop hurting eventually." And she was like, "Oh, yeah." You know, sometimes you can face something if you know it's not going to be permanent. You know? Have you ever had a bad haircut? You can endure a bad haircut, why? It grows back! Or... I'm still waiting for mine to get fixed. Point B, you can endure a lot if you know it's not going to last forever. So, that's one way. But another reason you can not fear the coming persecution is because what's the worst they can do to you? Kill you, right? Hear what Jesus said in Luke 12:4. "I tell you, my friends, do not fear those who kill the body, and after that, have nothing more that they can do." That's the worst they can do to you, send you all to Jesus. It's a really bad result, right? So, don't be afraid. The worst thing to do is kill you. Doesn't mean it's going to be pleasant, doesn't mean it's going to be nice. It's the worst they can do. And then, we hear in Psalm 56:11. "In God I trust, I shall not be afraid; what can man do to Me?" Not much. So, don't be afraid, okay? Then, we're told, "Be faithful unto death; be faithful even unto death." This is where the rubber hits the road when it comes to persecution. One of the things that I think is important for us to understand is that persecution is inherently good thing for the church. Because here's what persecution does. It has a sifting effect. And Jesus tells the parable of the four soils, the parable of the soul. Says there's some that it's grown out, it goes into shallow soil. And what happens? Doesn't have roots, so it dies. And then, it gets thrown among the thorns, gets choked out. Jesus explains that and say that, you know, there's difficulties that come up in life and those that don't endure, those that don't stick with it, fall away. First John tells us that they departed from us because they were never part of us to begin with. Persecution has an amazingly powerful effect on separating true believers from false believers. You know, people who don't really believe it will not die for it. "Be faithful even unto death." Understand that part of God's purpose in suffering, in persecution, in tribulation to His people is to refine us so that we know what really matters to us. Why are we a Christian? Are we a Christian because we think we get a lot of good stuff out of God? Or are we a Christian because we've committed our life to Him, and we're going to be faithful even unto death, no matter what He brings our way? That's what suffering does. It has that effect of putting everything into perspective. Hear what Jesus says in Matthew 24. We looked at some of these verses just, you know, other session. "Then they will deliver you..." He's talking about what's going to happen in the future, what's going to happen after His crucifixion to His followers. He says, "Then they will deliver you up to tribulation and put you to death, and you will be hated." I don't like to be hated, but Jesus said, "will be hated" "by all nations, for My name is saved." "And then many will fall away and betray one another and hate one another; and many false prophets will arise and lead many astray; and because lawlessness will be increased, the love of many will grow cold; but the one who endures to the end will be saved." That's a beautiful image of what persecution does. And I think we're living in that period. I mean, we've been living in those days ever since the resurrection. So, this is not something new that we've been waiting. But I think in our generation, we're beginning to see that more and more. Because here's what's happening, and I see it. There's going to come a moment in the life of the evangelical church in the United States, of which the other Baptists are evangelical. So, I mean, you know, we're not some monolithic group, but we are evangelical in that we believe the gospel. Every evangelical church is going to have to decide who's going to follow. Are we going to be faithful to Christ? Or are we going to compromise with the world? And there will be suffering as a result of being faithful to Christ. Jesus promised it. It's nothing new. We just have to decide to be faithful even unto death. So, the one who endures to the end, that's who will be saved. And as a trajectory, you can kind of spot when compromise begins to creep in, and it becomes one step after another. Before you know it, you've gone on this long path down away from Christ. And it can begin when you stop trying to be firm in your faithfulness to Him. So, that's the command that we're testing. What's the promise to those who are faithful? The first thing to understand is that Jesus is bigger than any persecution that you and I will face. Notice how it begins there in verse 8. "The words of the first and the last, who died and came to life." That's not by accident. This is how Jesus is described at the beginning of these verses. He's the one who is the beginning and the end. He's the one who died, He's the one who came back to life. He is bigger than any persecution that you will face. Cling to Him, and He'll be enough. Even in the midst of difficulty, even in the midst of adversity, even in the midst of trouble, He will be enough. And then, we're told, "The one who conquers will not be hurt by the second death." End of the Book of Revelation tells us what second death is, "It's being cast into the lake of fire." The one who endures to the end, the one who is faithful even unto death, physical death, will not experience of the second death. And Jesus promises that He will give to those who are faithful the crown of life. Now, I want to close with a story from church history. We don't know who the pastors were of these seven churches with the exception of this one. We know who this was written to. We know who the angel of the Church of Smyrna was. More than likely, at the time, it was a man by the name of Polycarp. Great name. If you ever have a child, you want to give it a good biblical, not non-biblical, but good name, Polycarp. That would be a misnomer. We don't know what Polycarp means, but it's a good name. Polycarp was the pastor, and he was a disciple of John. He was a young man at this point. About 50 to 60 years later, he's not as young anymore. And it's a time of persecution. He's still in Smyrna, he's still faithfully serving Christ. But he is arrested for being Christian. He's brought to a public trial and asked to... He's brought to a public trial and asked to renounce Christ. And I've given you this from the margin of Polycarp, is what this is from. "Now, as Polycarp was entering the stadium, there came to him a voice from heaven, saying, 'Be strong and show thyself a man, O Polycarp.' No one saw who it was that spoke to him, but those of our brethren who were present heard the voice. And as he was brought forward, the tumult became great when they heard that Polycarp was taken. And when he came near, the proconsul asked him whether he was Polycarp. On his confessing that he was, the proconsul sought to persuade him to deny Christ, saying, 'Have respect to thy old age and other similar things according to their customs, such as swear by the fortune of Caesar. Repent and say, 'Away with the atheists.'" Remember, I told you that Christians were usually being atheists. "But Polycarp, gazing with the stern countenance on all the multitude of the wicked heathen then in the stadium, and waving his hand towards them while was groans, he looked up to heaven and said to those in the stands, 'Away with the atheists.'" Turned on their face. Then the proconsul urging him and saying, "Swear, I will set thee at liberty, reproach Christ." Oh, I love his response. "Polycarp declared, 'Eighty and six years have I served him, and he never did me any injury. How then can I blaspheme my King and my Savior?'" That's being faithful unto death. The story goes on, and they eventually killed Polycarp for being a believer in Jesus Christ. Eighty-six years old. At least, perhaps older, we don't really know for sure. But at least eighty-six. And as a result, killed for his faith in Christ. Now, I read a story like that, this happens about the year 150, somewhere in that neck of the woods. John is writing Revelation to these churches mid-nineties, so 95, 96. So this is 55 years. So Polycarp was a young man in his thirties when he gets this, when he hears these words. And yet, 50 plus years passed. He lived out what Jesus had told him 50 plus years before, "Be faithful unto death." And Polycarp was faithful. He was faithful, even unto death. Thousands of Christians would be killed over the years for the faith. In fact, more Christians have been killed in the last 100 years for the Christian faith than were ever killed in the 1900 years before that. The persecution's not gotten less, it's actually increasing. We need to be prepared in our own lives for the suffering, the persecution that can come as a result of the witness of Christ. And be prepared to be faithful even unto death. Any questions? All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you for your word. We pray that as we go, that we will live faithful lives, no matter what comes our way. That we'll be faithful to you because you are enough. And we ask all this in Jesus' name.